I want to remind everyone that the candidates have not been given any of the questions, only the topics. Commissioner Lewis, welcome. You have three minutes for your opening statement before we start the questions.
First of all, I'm used to five people sitting up here, so it's kind of got me nervous sitting up here by myself, but here we go. Hello, I am Elderator City Commissioner Greg Lewis, and everybody calls me Greg. I am a family man, a husband, a father, and a grandfather. I am a two-term elected official as Elderator City Commissioner. I serve at the pleasure of the people of Eldorado who voted for me. As an elected official, I serve at their voice. I am a member of the Elderator Chamber of Commerce, and I'm on the Board of Directors for Eldorado Inc. I serve on the Eldorado Inc. Housing Committee, and as a Commissioner, I am a member of the 254 Advisory Board. I was a member of the Eldorado Facilities Authorization or Authority of Butler County, which is the BG Stadium Board. I am a member of the Eldorado, I was a member of the Eldorado Planning Commission for two-year term before I became a City Commissioner. I have an interest in Eldorado Main Street too, and I am committed to see the success and thrive in Main Street because it is the glue of this community. I was the only Commissioner that stood up for the Main Street in the Commission Chamber when the rest of the City Commissioners sat in their chairs. I'm a past Board Member of the Unified District 490 Partners in Education. I hold an Associate's Degree from Butler County Community College and a Bachelor of Science Degree from Friends University. Me and my wife Larissa reside in Eldorado and have a son David and a daughter Alicia. David and his wife Nikki reside in Eldorado too. Alicia and her husband, U.S. Army Sergeant Bryson Bohannon, they reside in Fort Campbell, Kentucky. My wife and I have four grandsons, Quentin Lewis, Callan Lewis, Bentley Bohannon, and Rowan Lewis. We are members of the First Christian Church in Eldorado, and I have been employed for the past 27 years as Plant Manager for Ergon Asphalt Emulsion here in Eldorado. My wife and I, we're avid Kansas City Chiefs fans and Chicago Cub fans, and we travel because we're season ticket holders to all the games. Also, as a City Commissioner, I would like to say thank you to the citizens of Eldorado for electing me to represent them as a City Commissioner for Seat Two for the past two terms, and have been on a crash course of the City of Eldorado Government 101. I have gained knowledge about the challenges the city faces in the future. I feel that the City Staff and the City Planning Commissioners are the key to do the due diligence for the Eldorado Commission. The Volunteer Board Members who make up the City Boards also do fine work for the city. As Commissioner, I'm an avid supporter for the safety of the citizens of Eldorado. I'm proud of our police and fire officers. I am passionate about the City Employees and what they do for their jobs for the citizens. I try to listen to the people of Eldorado. Am I done?
Okay.
Three minutes was up.
Greg, here's question number one. Next month voters will decide on whether to renew the one-cent sales tax, which has been in existence since 1989, to either make it permanent or continue to renew it every five years. What do you see as the advantages of making this tax continuous rather than having to renew it every five years?
I think the advantages of making it permanent, it allows the city to use the funds and what it needs that are appropriate for the city. We can do the things that we want to do for our parks. That's mainly where most of that money goes, and what we want to do for our roads. And it also helps for tax reduction.
Okay. What strategies do you believe should be adopted to attract new businesses to Eldorado? Please comment on what types of new businesses should be focused on to come to Eldorado.
Well, Eldorado is a large water community, so we have a vast amount of water. We have Eldorado Inc., which is our key player in the roles to bring businesses to Eldorado. We need to look for companies to come into Eldorado that use a large amount of water, that are environmentally friendly to the community. We have a vast amount of industrial park land out there that we have available, and large companies have come and looked at Eldorado, like Panasonic, Toyota, and also, what was the other one? Anyway, Tesla. They all looked at Eldorado, and Eldorado was in the top five of two of the companies, which made Eldorado kind of boost to the top. But, you know, that showed to people of Eldorado and Wichita that Eldorado is a challenging place. And so I think the opportunities in Eldorado are good for companies, and we're going to eventually see something big come into Eldorado.
Okay. What strategy should be developed to facilitate new housing, to bring families, new families and workers to Eldorado? And how does this impact our long-term economic development goals?
Well, there are tools out there that the City of Eldorado needs to look into, like the Rural Housing Incentive District and the Community Developed Block Grants that are out there. Moderate income home housing, affordable housing programs, Homes for Rental Development Program, and federal and state local housing income, our housing tax credits. Eldorado, when you talk to the people here in town, they want to find something that they can live in. And, you know, 17.2% of the people in this town are in poverty. And 60% of this people who live in Eldorado, they own their homes and 40% don't. So what we're looking for is, they ask, can I find something that's in $130,000 to $180,000 range? Well, it will be tough to find something like that here in Eldorado. And so we end up winding up with $200,000 to $250,000 homes. Well, the people look at that, and they say, well, I can get that in Andover, and Andover's got a lot more amenities than Eldorado does, so we have to compete with Andover for that. So what we need to do is bring in large industries so we can have the people want to move to Eldorado and live in our houses.
Okay, good. Historical building preservation is something I'd like to hear your thoughts on. We have seen some of our old historic buildings be put to good use and help to attract new or existing businesses. But at what point do we condemn a dangerous building versus seeking a buyer to purchase and renovate those structures? How can we prevent the decay of our buildings in the downtown district?
Well, one thing we need to know about for our Main Street here in Eldorado, our Main Street is a historical district. And not just a Main Street, it's a historical district. So anything we do downtown has to be within their guidelines. And it goes all the way up to the federal level on that. And you can get 20% incentives from the federal government for doing that, but that comes at a cost. And if you go into it and you think you're going to rebuild a building downtown, and you don't have an architect and you don't have a contractor, you're going to lose. You need to have your architect, you need to have your contractor in place before you make plans on doing anything and going before the city to see about doing something downtown in those buildings. I am for, you know, for renovation of the downtown buildings because they're the glue of this town. But there's some of them down there that do need to be taken down. But I do not want to see the Masonic Building. I do not want to see anything ever happen to it. A lot of people compare Eldorado with Augusta. And you can go down to Augusta's Main Street, and it's thriving. And everything is full down there, and people are going down there. But that's a district, that's a Main Street. Eldorado is a historical district, so things are moving a little bit slower in Eldorado, and we will eventually get there.
Along those same lines, what can be done to improve South Main Street in our downtown district?
I think you want to talk about downtown or further south?
South of Central.
South of Central. First of all, I think they need to come into town and put a roundabout right there at the Southwest Traffic Way that will shove the truck traffic off through the trailer park and onto the street that it's supposed to be on. Or they could go towards the refinery like they're supposed to. And then that will clear up downtown so we can go in there and we can revitalize some of that stuff that's down that area. There's several buildings down there that they don't even have the titles to those buildings. They don't know who they belong to, and we need to research that and get that done too. And it's just, we also need to work on the the drainings down there because it floods down there. And a lot of people don't like to be down there because it floods on heavy rains. So we need to work on that and get that drainage all taken care of down there.
Okay. Besides the improvements that are already funded, what capital projects are needed here in the City of Eldorado? What do you believe are the highest priorities for the City Commission that the City Commission should be addressing?
Well, right now, some of the priorities, are you talking about downtown or are you talking about the rest of the city? Okay, we want to look at infrastructure, K254 project. We want to make sure we're not left out on that because it is a big project, and it's going to take Eldorado all the way to the west side to Goddard by the time it's done. And we want to be a part of that. We need to look at that intersection of Boyer Road and the Turnpike and make sure that that's done correctly where it's safe. They're going to be working on the Central Avenue Stormwater Project. We also need to look at Main Street and figure out how we can drain Main Street so it doesn't flood the buildings like what happened at Sungren's and flood their basement. And they're also working on Constant Creek Sewers along the west side so in case we land one of those large developments out there in Industrial Park, it has enough capacity to handle what's out there. We need to work on the quality of life in this town and the image of this town. We're not new, we're old. And when people come to Augusta or to Eldorado, they see old. They go to Andover, they see new because Andover's only 50 years old. Eldorado is quite a bit older, 125 years. So we need to go in and revitalize our housing here in town. Parks and Recreation, we need to go up there in the village out there, and we need to put in a pad out there, a water park, and a new park out there. But that one's going to have to be unique because it's going to have to be handicapped because there's a lot of handicapped that live in that area where that park's going to go into. We also need to enhance our public safety here in Eldorado. Also, we need to promote the lake. We don't own the lake, but we need to keep promoting it because that's our draw. It brought in 1.6 million people last year. That's a lot of people to Eldorado. And they come in here and they go to our Walmart, they go to our Dylan's, and they go to our fast food restaurants. So we need to do a large promotion of that. We don't need to annex it, we just need to promote it.
Okay. Commissioner, in your closing statements, will you tell us about the role of a Commissioner and in your mind, how you will serve in that role?
Sure. Sorry, I'm finally feeling comfortable. As a Commissioner, there's a lot of things that need to be done in this town. You know, when I first became a Commissioner, the people that come to me, they said, we want to see progress. That's one thing that's missing in Eldorado was progress, putting the people to work. Well, we had COVID happen in the middle of it, you know, and it made it kind of hard about that. But we are seeing progress happen in this town. We're seeing a lot of new businesses come into this town. You know, we got a new Orslands. We're getting a new harbor store. Other things that have been in this town have been remodeling themselves and making themselves newer. And the Industrial Park, we got, you know, most of all BG Products is out there. Their warehouses and all that stuff bring jobs into Eldorado. We got a nice football stadium. We just need to figure out how to get the city and the two school districts and the college to work together as one. Because right now, everybody is wanting a swimming pool, and that's the biggest thing. And that's going to be quite a bit of expense on the community just to build a swimming pool. So it's going to take four of us together to get this done. Because the City of Eldorado, the people of Eldorado cannot afford to take it on themselves.
Commissioner Lewis, thank you very, very much for your answers and your comments, along with Cindy Scribner's. Greg, well done. Thank you very much. You are now excused.
Thank you.
Hi, everybody. Phil Benedict here with the Eldorado Chamber and this year's moderator for our candidate forum here in 2023. Thank you for being with us. We are shooting this video because Cindy Scribner, who is a challenger for position two on the City Commission, is unable to be with us next week during the candidate forum. So we are going to be asking her the same questions that we'll be asking the incumbent in that forum next week. I have sent both of them the topics, but not the questions. The topics we'll be talking about are promotion of the lake and recreational facilities, historic building preservation, strategies for economic development, strategies and ideas to facilitate housing, thoughts on changes to the one-cent sales tax, and priorities for the city. So Cindy, welcome.
Thank you.
You have three minutes to make an opening statement.
Okay. Good evening. My name is Cindy Scribner. I have lived in and around Eldorado my entire life. I graduated from Flint Hills High School, Butler Community College, and got my bachelor's from Friends University. I apologize that I cannot be with you in person this evening since I originally committed to participate in this forum. I've had a family need come up that has me out of town this evening, but I do want to thank the Chamber for allowing me to tape these important questions that we're going to talk about tonight. I have worked in my adult life at Butler Community College, the City of Eldorado as a police officer, Flint Hills Resources, and I'm currently a small business owner here in Eldorado. My wife and I own Scribner Enterprises, and we also co-own All Service Plumbing. Throughout my adult life, I have been very active within the community. I have served on the Board of Directors for the United Way of Eldorado, Big Brothers, Big Sisters, and Crime Stoppers. I have also volunteered my time at several events around the city and have been a volunteer coach for both the city and the Eldorado YMCA. I am running for City Commission because I love Eldorado and think it has a tremendous opportunity to grow. When I look at some of the resources that we have, I can't help but wonder why we aren't attracting businesses. I also believe that I could bring a unique perspective as I would be not only the youngest Commissioner if elected, but I would also be the only Commissioner that is 100% self-employed.
Thank you, Cindy. We'll begin with the first question, and you have three minutes to answer. Next month voters will decide on whether to renew the one-cent sales tax, which has existed since 1989, and to make it permanent or to continue to renew it every five years. What do you see as the advantages of making this tax continuous rather than having to renew it every five years?
Well, I think the obvious answer is that it's permanent, right? It's funds that are coming into the city from here till whenever. So I think that's kind of the obvious answer as to why it should be permanent. The concerns that I have with that is that we don't know what the needs of the city are going to be in possibly 20 years. So I think there has to be some kind of a middle ground there between, how do we keep it in place? Because it's a benefit to the city, to our budget, but also because it's a tax that is more equally spread across all the citizens, but also is paid by a lot of people from out of town, which is always nice, right, that we can get visitors and other people to help bring money to our budget. So those are some things that I would say, we have to kind of find a middle ground there to not only look at the needs now, but also how do we make sure that we can change it for the future needs.
Okay. What strategies do you believe should be adopted to attract new business to Eldorado? Please comment a little bit on what types of new businesses should be focused on to be brought to Eldorado.
Well, I think the types of businesses that should be brought to Eldorado should be manufacturing. If you look at the things that everybody says makes Eldorado a great place to invest in, right? Water, rail, good location to roads that lead out, then I think manufacturing makes sense. Maybe some kind of shipping, you know? You know, someone that makes something, ships it to a warehouse, it gets packaged and then distributed out, things of that. I think makes sense for the environment that we have. You know, I think the number one question that needs to be asked is why 20 minutes down the road, they're able to get those things, but we aren't here? You look at some of the studies that have been presented to the city as to why we're not landing businesses and things like that, well, they always talk about the region, right? Well, the region includes Eldorado and includes eastern Wichita, but yet they're getting all of it, and Eldorado is still just going, well, I wonder why we're not getting it? Well, we may have to answer some really hard questions as to why we're not and figure out a way to get them. You know, obviously, people are willing to drive 20 minutes. People do it both directions every day. Some people come from Wichita to Eldorado to work, some go from Eldorado to Wichita. So I think some of the excuses that we've had in the past aren't really cutting it anymore, and I don't think it's fair to the city, to the citizens, to continue to just say, well, we're not landing them. Maybe we'll go pay for a study to figure out why. At some point, we have to get down and dirty and figure out why we're not getting them and find a way to do it.
Okay, thank you. What strategies should be developed to facilitate new housing, to bring new families and workers to Eldorado? And how does this affect our long-term economic development goals?
Sure. So ideally, you would want, if we attracted businesses to the city, you would want those people to live in the city. That's ideal for a lot of reasons that we probably don't need to get into to stay within the point of the question. I sat through a Hazling study here, maybe six months ago or something, and we addressed a lot of different needs that the city has. And when I left there, I was thinking about it, and I thought probably what we need to do is identify the most important one right now. So for example, if we decide that entry-level homes for the elderly, people that want to stay independently housed but can't live in their bigger houses now, let's find a way to build and develop entry-level homes so that they can stay in the community, they can stay in independent housing, and then that opens up already-built houses for most likely first-time homebuyers, which we know is an issue, is that first-time homebuyer base, that $120,000 to $180,000 house. That's what is missing, in my opinion, in the potential housing market for buyers. And we get so caught up in, you know, oh, well, there's five things we have to do, so we don't do any of them, instead of identifying the one that we feel would be the most important, and let's try to eat that piece of the pie. And then, okay, that worked. Here's why it worked well, here why it didn't. Let's try the next one, make some adjustments, and keep moving forward.
Okay, very good. Historical building preservation is something I'd like to hear your thoughts on. We have seen some of our old historic buildings be put to good use and help to attract new and existing businesses. But at what point do we condemn dangerous buildings versus seeking a buyer to purchase and renovate these structures? How can we prevent the decay of these buildings in our downtown district?
Well, they can't sit vacant for 20 years, 30 years. That's going to do more harm to a building than anything else. So I think, you know, taking the ones that are there, making sure that they stay occupied, that they stay taken care of is one thing. You know, at some point, someone has to make the decision, is it too far gone to renovate? Or do we try to attract someone to develop it? There's a lot of pieces of that puzzle, right? Obviously, some of those buildings, you're looking at high-ticket prices to get them where they need to be. So the first thing you have to ask yourself is, who has that kind of money to do that and wants to do that? Is that an individual? Is that a business that we attract to the city on some kind of long-term lease so that it makes sense for them to invest the funds? You know, obviously, working in conjunction with Main Street, you can present them some opportunities for tax credits, historic grants, opportunities that are there. You know, but again, I don't think anything, any problem that's presented is never black and white. So we have to look at the building, we have to look at the possibilities of that building, and then maybe not just have a blanket, well, when it gets to this point, we condemn it. But you have to, at the end of the day, whoever invests in it, it has to be profitable for them or they're not going to do it. You know, and so I think we have to look at all of our opportunities, everything that's out there, and then say, well, at this point, it can either sit here for another 10 years or we take care of the problem and we move forward and we cut our ties. As much as that would be unfortunate for our downtown area, sometimes that's just the reality of the situation.
Okay. Along with that, what do you think can be done to improve South Main Street in our downtown district?
Man, that's a good question. I think as we have events downtown, get people down there. You know, a lot of times, if we have an event downtown, it's Third to Main, you know, and so people never go down there. You know, I think it comes back to strategically putting businesses on Main Street. If we have someone that wants to come in and, say for example, a bakery, well, that's going to be something that somebody might walk to in the downtown area, right? So let's get them walking south of Central. So I think there's a lot of opportunities. We've done great north of Central. It took time, so now if we attack the south part of Central, we can't expect it to happen overnight. The north part of Central didn't happen overnight, but let's keep going and making that our focus.
Okay, good. Besides the improvements that are already funded, what capital projects are needed in the City of Eldorado? What do you believe are the highest priorities for the City Commission that they should be addressing?
I think at the end of the day, the Commission needs to address how the city's going to grow. You know, it goes back to, for, you know, my whole adult life, we've all been saying the same thing, right? We're laying locked here, we can't do this, whatever. Every city at some point faces these challenges, and we need to either decide this is the direction we're going to go, and go. Because continuing to be inactive in anything is just going to keep us in the same place we are now. So I think they have to say strategically, this is where we think the city needs to go. City, find a way to do it so that we can address some of the challenges that we've heard about tonight, right? Which is housing and things of that nature. It might be the wrong answer in the long term, right? We may make a decision now, and 20 years down the road, we say, well, we could have done this, but at least we did something because sitting here doing nothing isn't getting anywhere, right? It's the same thing that we've been having for the last, I don't know, 20, 25, 30 years. So I think that is the first thing, and I think the second thing So I think that is the first thing, and I think the second thing is economic growth. I think those two things have to be the priority of the city to help move the city forward. Otherwise, it's just rinse and repeat, rinse and repeat, dealing with the same issues.
Okay, very good. Cindy Scribner, thank you for being here. In your closing statement, will you please tell us what the role of the commissioner is in your mind and how you will serve in that role?
I think the role of the commission is to speak for what the citizens want. You know, they don't micromanage the city, but they make sure that the city's doing what they need to be doing. They set a plan and they make sure that the city executes on that. They have to be good stewards of the funds that the taxpayers pay, and I think they have to be the vision for the city in connection of all those things. The city commission has to be people that say, this is our history, we're proud of our history, we're going to preserve it the best we can, but this is what we think El Dorado can be. And there's a balance of both of those, and I'm ready to start moving into the can be part, not just the what-if part. Let's try to make some things happen. I think there was a second part of the question, but I don't remember.
It was capital improvements. No, it wasn't. We talked about that. I think you answered.
I hit them all. Okay, good deal.
Cindy, thank you very much.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Thanks, everybody. This video will not be seen until after the candidate forum on October 4th. So we hope that we'll be able to combine the incumbent Greg Lewis's answers as well as Cindy's, so they'll all be available here on the chamber website. Thank you.